It's six o'clock, can we close the doors please? You ready? Other people? Thank you. It is 6:00 PM, it is January 25th, we are at 901 North Main Street in Conyers, Georgia. And I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners zoning public hearing to order. I would like to get an approval of the agenda, please.
And so, let me just interrupt right there for just a moment, if I may, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioner Williams. We have an applicant tonight that is interested in withdrawing, so if you could please call the applicant for 1680, 1700, and 1720 Walker Road on behalf of D.R. Horton to the podium to make a brief announcement, it will affect tonight's agenda.
Thank you. May I have the applicant for 1680, 1700, and 1720 Walker Road come to the podium, please?
Hey, Kenneth Wood, 350 Research Court, Peachtree Corners, Georgia, representing D.R. Horton. And so, we want to, we've gotten a lot of different comments from the community. We made some here recent, very recent changes that we submitted back. And we know that, you know, there's still a housing shortage, what's coming up, we don't want to band-aid it. And so, we just want the time to look at it, try to come back with a, hopefully with the best plan at some point in the future, work with the community and find out, you know, what the best way to develop in the area is. And so, we wanted to withdraw without prejudice to be able to do that.
And so, if you could, if it pleases the board to amend your agenda tonight to remove item B from the agenda?
So, I move to approve the agenda with the amendment of removing item B.
A second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll be on to approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of October 26th, 2023.
I second that motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Would we please read the rules of procedure of the public hearing, please?
So, it will play?
Okay. Can?
Each speaker must sign their name to the appropriate zoning case sheet and fill out a public, each speaker must...
Hold one second. Can I have staff sit on the perimeter, not you all, but like Kirsten, if you don't mind, so that they can, so we can have as many seats for the audience as possible? Thank you. Okay, now if we can move forward.
Each speaker must sign their name to the appropriate zoning case sheet and fill out a public comment card to register their intent to speak prior to the start of this meeting. Each item of business shall be handled in the order that it appears on the agenda, unless upon motion of the board, the order is changed. A member of the county planning staff will present each item to the board and will provide recommendations made by both the planning staff and the Conyers-Rockdale Planning Commission for each item of business. The zoning applicant or the agent will have 10 minutes in which to make his or her presentation. Any portion of their 10 minutes may be reserved for rebuttal following the opposition to the application. After the applicant's presentation, all registered speakers who wish to speak in favor of the application will then be heard. They will also be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the applicant has made his or her presentation and the speakers in favor of the application have been heard, the secretary will then call upon the registered speakers in opposition to the application. The opposition shall likewise be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the public hearing portion is closed, no other speakers will be heard. As a reminder, speakers are to address the board and not the applicant or the audience and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers shall be permitted. After all public comments have been heard, the board may elect to... Each speaker applicant has may hit and be heard. As a reminder, speakers are to address the board and not the applicant or the audience and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers shall be permitted. After all public comments have been heard, the board may elect to hold general discussion. However, no decisions will be rendered at this hearing. Decisions will be made at the next regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. Appeals shall be filed with the Clerk of Rockdale County Superior Court within 30 days after the final decision by the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. May we proceed with the call of the first item?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
The first item on the agenda is old business. First item is rezoning case 23-09 and future land use case 23-02. The applicant is Calabrow Holdings, represented by Battle Law. The subject property is Northwest Ebenezer and Zero Highway 138. Before you this evening are two requests. The first request is to amend the future land use map, the future land use map from office institutional slash commercial to high density. Second request before you is to rezone the 15.5 acre property from AR Agricultural Residential to MRU, mixed residential unit zoning district for development of a mixture of townhomes and single-family development. The subject property has frontage along Highway 138 and Ebenezer. The approximate frontage along Highway 138 is 112,000, not 12,000, 1,200 square feet. And approximate square footage along Ebenezer is 600 square feet. The subject property is located west of Heritage High School, about a half a mile away. The proposed development will comprise of 66 townhomes and 27 detached single-family units. The minimum lot size for the single-family homes are 4,000 square feet, while the minimum unit size for the townhomes will be 1,800 square feet. The subject property abuts Sugar Hill subdivision. To give some comparison, the minimum lot size for the single-family subdivision is 10,000 square feet. However, the unit size for each individual houses range from 1,300 to 1,900 square feet. As well as on site plan, there will be two points of access onto the subject property. There is a right in and right out on Ebenezer Road and a full access, I'm sorry, right in and right out along Highway 138 and a full access along Ebenezer Road. The applicant has indicated on the site plan that there will be seven pocket parks to provide the community, as well as there will be internal sidewalks throughout the entire property. The planning commission did recommend denial of this application. They cited concerns of traffic and overall compatibility with the surrounding area. The applicant is here to do their presentations. I do ask you to hold off your questions until after the presentation because your questions may have been answered at that time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Hope you're doing well and having a great start to your new year. My name is Josh Mahoney and I'm an attorney at Battle Law PC, which is located at 3562 Habersham and North Lake in Tucker, Georgia. I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of the applicant pursuant to the future land use amendment and rezoning. This matter has been before you in the past. Late last year, we were before you. And at the time, we told you that we were looking to do this rezoning to allow for the development of 93 new homes. Chris did a great job of laying out how that split up, 66 townhomes, 27 single-family detached homes, all of which will be for sale, fee simple units. Another great piece about this layout is that there is more than 57,000 green space, excuse me, 57,000 square feet of green space scattered throughout the development and connected by streetlit sidewalks. So, everyone in the community will have access to some green space, whether it be a pocket park in the middle or a dog park up in the top-left corner of the development. One thing I want to point out is that this parcel is actually split. It is split by the entrance to the abutting subdivision, so 3.7 acres of this parcel are actually immediately adjacent to Heritage High School's property on the other side of the entrance to the abutting subdivision. We are not looking to develop that portion of land. Should this rezoning and future land use amendment be approved, that portion of land would be donated to Heritage High School to use as they see fit. We're happy to report that the planning staff have recommended approval of our application. We understand that the planning commission recommended to deny, but when working with the planning staff, we feel that we've, the conditions that are, that will be placed on this approval do a great job of addressing the concerns that were raised at planning commission, including traffic, because we will be required to complete a traffic study should this application be approved. And what comes along with that is any recommendations that come out of the traffic study will have to be implemented before we can start building out this development. Basically, what that comes down to is if there is a need for traffic improvements to help alleviate or mitigate the impact, we will have to do it. If there are no recommendations that come out of that, it's because the impact, the proposed impact from this community on the traffic situation is so small that they just don't see the need for any recommendations. So, either way, the traffic problem or concern will be addressed. Zooming in a little bit on this development, I just want to talk a little bit about the homes themselves. The townhomes will range in size from 1,800 to 2,200 square feet, whereas the single-family detached homes will range in size from 2,100 to 2,600 square feet. This is quite a bit larger than the home size of the abutting neighborhood. But we think that this is a great kind of transition as we move from the single-family detached product into the commercial node that we have here at the intersection of Ebenezer and the highway, that the density is warranted, but also the increased home size should help to, help this community fit in as a kind of a step in the right direction when it comes to development for the area. The price points for these homes will vary. The townhomes will begin in the low 300s, whereas the single-family detached will be in the mid-to-high 300s. So, we're thinking that this will fit in with what we've got in the area already. Zooming out now, I really appreciate the staff's recommendation of approval and I think we should let that stand, but I'd like to add to that, we are in a housing crisis. I received a message from the American Planning Association earlier this week that said we are short something, I think it was 4 million homes nationwide. And leaving a parcel like this vacant and undeveloped doesn't do anything to help solve that. The housing crisis affects us all, including everybody here in Rockdale County. And all we can do is open the door for thoughtful and considerate development. Development is what we need to address the housing crisis. And here we have a great opportunity with a development that takes into consideration the surrounding neighborhood by positioning the single-family homes against the existing single-family homes to create a compatibility of uses, but also gently increases density to get as many homes as possible so that we can really start to move towards addressing the housing crisis. If we jump to the end of the presentation, we do have some representation of what the homes could look like. We have a great mixture of high-quality materials, including brick and two-car garages throughout. On the next slide, you'll see that that two-car garage applies to the townhomes as well and the mixture of materials also applies here as well, mixture of brick, hardy plank, and other high-quality materials. I know we're not voting this evening, but at your next hearing, I would ask that you take all of this into consideration and vote to approve this application, subject to staff's conditions, of which we are amenable to all of them. But with that, I'll reserve the rest of my time and take any questions you all might have.
Do you have any questions?
I have one question. I'm very interested, I know the 300s is what the market will bear in Rockdale County. I'm also very interested in seeing if there's any way that we can do some truly affordable units. Have you talked to your client about maybe making a couple of percentage of these affordable, something that the, you know, the teachers, the nurses, county, city employees could truly afford?
So, I have not spoken to my client about that specifically, however, I think that's a great idea with the high school being right next door. That's certainly something that we can look at.
Thank you. Do you have any?
I did. Tell me again what the lot size was for the single-family homes?
Sure. I think Mr. Wheeler had that information. Did you say it was 4,000 square feet for the SFD homes? Yes. 4,000 square feet for the single-family.
Okay.
Is there anyone signed up to speak?
We have a total of five, six people signed up to speak in opposition. The first person is Ms. Margaret Coffey.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
I do oppose to the development in that, in this area. I looked at what it would be with the townhouses. If we have four family members there, there'll be 264 more family members that have to come down Rockdale and to the grocery stores and everything. If we have five family members in one house, that come to 1,320 people extra in Rockdale County. With the total of houses that will be built with the 60, if each person on those houses have two cars, that's 132 cars more on Ebenezer Road. Let's say if each, each one of them have three children, that's 198 more students in Heritage, Edward, Sims schools that we have to provide for, plus our income, that is a lot of senior citizens down Ebenezer Road, that's our own fixed income, which our taxes is increasing every year. So, if we look at what they're saying that they want there for each residence, with the new houses and everything. If you calculate everybody that's going to be there, the four, four family, four people in one home, that's 850 people extra. For five people, that's the 1,025 people extra on Ebenezer Road. And let's talk about cars. Pollution. Two cars, he said, that's a two-car townhouse houses, that's 410 cars on Ebenezer Road. That the roads are already damaged, that don't get fixed every year. They used to be, 15 years ago, we used to have the people coming, cleaning the roads up and fixing them every year, but since we have changed from Republican to Democrat, the roads are not being repaired. Let's say the holidays, when they come in, New Year's, Christmas, Fourth of July, each one of those homes have six bullets. That's 1,230 bullets going up in the air. This year, 2024 came in, I was so afraid, every year I am, I'm 68 years old. I am so afraid every year, because whatever they shoot up, come down. And these are not small guns that's going off. These are very large guns going off constantly, every holiday. So, I'm, and you know, I'm looking at all of this, what this developer is bringing in. And it's, it's a lot. You know, so yes, I do, I do, you know, don't want this coming in. And then you've got to look at the grocery stores, our taxes, our, where we have to get our tax. This is more people in the community that's coming in. So, what is Rockdale is going to do for the community? That people that's already here, that's already paying taxes and everything is not being done. Our streets are dirty, we don't have the people come there anymore and clean those up. Our roads are with holes in them, you come down Ebenezer, Parker, Sims, all that area, the roads are, they're awful. So, we're going to use money to put more people in, let's clean these roads up. That's all I want to say.
Thank you so much.
Next person to speak is Mr. James Leaward. I hope I say your last name correct.
Yes, Leonard. Good evening. My name is James Leonard. I live in the southeastern part of Rockdale County. I have been there for over somewhat, over 30 years. And I am here to speak against this form of development in Rockdale County. Actually, I'm personally offended that continually we have so many people trying to come to Rockdale County with the idea of changing the rules so that they can make some money. And let's make no bones about it, that is all this is about. This is about a developer making money. When I come to these meetings, let me tell you what I hear and see and what I don't hear and see. I see a presentation about a project like this and I hear nothing about what's good for Rockdale County, how it will improve Rockdale County. You know, the idea that this developer is going to address the housing crisis by building all of these fairly expensive homes in a compressed area is ludicrous. The idea that he's going to put in sidewalks that we can walk around on, I'm not leaving my neighborhood to go walk around in somebody else's neighborhood so I can go to some silly pocket park or walk my dog, that is just crazy. There is absolutely no advantage of this development for the citizens of Rockdale County. The other thing that I always see is that I see so much talk about this board hearing public comment and taking into account public comment. And I come to these meetings and one of the things that I see is that the developer will get up or their representative and talk about how great this project is going to be. And then we've got a chance for people in favor to talk and people opposed to talk. Well, guess what I see almost every time? There's never anybody in favor. The citizens that show up are in opposition. So, if this board looks at this and they look at what our planning commission, who are also residents of Rockdale County, say about this, and they say, "Well, these people deny it, nobody in the county showed up to speak for it, all the people who took the time to come out on an evening like this to speak against it are opposed to it," then the idea that this board would go off and approve something, which too often happens and we never hear what the reasons are, you just have to wonder, are they listening to the citizens or who are they listening to? So, I am opposed to this project. It is out of the character of Rockdale County. It is not the reason anybody in the past ever moved to Rockdale County. And all of the reasons that you will have heard and will hear about traffic, about congestion, you need to take seriously. I urge you to oppose this project.
Thank you.
Next person to speak is Ms. Jeanette McFarlane.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I oppose this project. I've been here several times. The first two people that came up, I support them wholeheartedly, okay? I live around the Miller's Chapel area. I don't know if you all have been there. You need to go. Because what has happened in my community, if you approve this, is going to happen in their community. So, I'm supporting them. Miller's Chapel Road, we got cardboard houses, lots of them, with anywhere between four to five feet between each house. Then we got townhouses. And you know the congestion of townhouses. Public, the grocery store public, some of the townhouses, their backyard faces public. Okay? Now, let's move over to Flatshoals Road. Two-road street. We got townhouses that look like projects, look like they almost sit in the street. We don't need any more houses, townhouses. Let me go back to Miller's Chapel too, because not only did they finish the houses and the townhouses, now we got apartments. They've taken all about green space away. So, everything that was just said about the traffic and everything else, that's absolutely true. We don't need, I think Rockdale has met their capacity with all of this building. I think these builders should find another place. If we have that kind of need, then find another place, please. We've had it and we keep saying the same thing. I don't know why, I don't know what's causing our commissioners and the planning department to approve these things. Who's going to move in these places? Are they going to be subsidized? And we don't know what we're going to get there. We came here for some peace. We are legal citizens of America. We pay our taxes. We are not Atlanta. We don't want to be Atlanta. So, we are asking you all to please stop. I mentioned one time and after this, I'm going to stop. There's blood in the water. There's blood in the water for a while. These developers know that when they come here, most of the times they can get their way. All you have to do is look around. They've gotten their way. And we need to send a halt, not a halt, but a stop. Go somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person to speak is Ms. Loretta McIntosh.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Loretta McIntosh.
Good evening.
I guess I don't really have to say too much, because I agree with what all the, our residents of Conyers said. So, I just want you all to just work for the resident, the Conyers residents. We do not want these developers to come here and we love our trees. And you all work for us, don't work for them. Like I said, I really don't have too much more to say, because they said it all. So, I just pray that you all will just, you know, work for us and not for these developers. And, you know, I don't know... And, you know, I don't know if you all know about the Fifteen Minute City? I don't know if that's what they're trying to do to us, these people have an agenda. I really think they have an agenda to control us to where we need to go, where we, you know, they want control. But don't give them that control. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Mr. George Kelicik.
Good evening, commissioners, citizens of Rockdale County. George Kelicik, chairman, Rockdale Sewer Water Conservation District, elected by the citizens of Rockdale County to protect this eighty-three thousand six hundred acres that we have here. Currently, according to the Georgia Forestry Commission, yes, we do have eighty-three thousand six hundred acres. Twenty-two thousand nine, one hundred and ninety-three in forest are twenty-seven percent. I'll ask you to go to Google and refer to Levittown, Pennsylvania. The developers, and I am also a real estate developer and investor, investor throughout the United States. But go to Levittown, Pennsylvania and look at the design in nineteen forty-seven, seventy-seven years ago. That's what is being brought by developers here to Rockdale County. So I'm bringing you recommendations and some other items this evening. This administration must invest in a detailed land use analysis, which is in your packet, which I've provided to you in the past. And I have provided that information with Ms. Injukka, our planning director. We do not need amendments to the future land use map. We need a detailed land analysis, just like has been created in DeKalb County and other counties in the state of Georgia. Secondly, there must be an economical, I mean, an eco-environmental study completed on every proposed development. We're not paying attention to our environment. This is what we're doing, we're clear cutting, we're clear cutting, we're destroying our trees that are hundreds of years old here in Rockdale County. This needs to stop. There needs to be a complete paradigm shift for these developers. And it must be from planning and development to planning and sustainability. Not only for ourselves, but the future generations that will invest in Rockdale County. Focusing on conservation and affordability, such as the village habitat design that I brought to you over a year and a half ago, which you said would be nice to have in Rockdale County. You're the leaders, we have to have a paradigm shift via the commissioners to make change in Rockdale County. Otherwise, we will continue to have protests out here on Main Street regarding these developments that are trying to be shoved down our throats. I ask you, Ms. Injukka hasn't, has visited the cottages on Vaughn, a very nice, affordable, from ninety thousand to one hundred and sixty-five thousand tiny homes. But ordinances had to be changed by the leaders to make these developments possible. So let us look at new designs where we can conserve our property, but still have the same amount of homes built for our citizens. So yes, this administration must implement new ordinances to accommodate these conservation villages such as in DeKalb and other Georgia counties. Not only to protect our citizens, but if we continue to clear cut, we're not gonna have any forests left. It's plain and simple. So I leave you with this, if not now, when? Plain and simple. Thank you very much.
Uh, the last speaker is Ms. Susan Smith.
Good evening, commissioners, Ms. Doreen, Ms. Sherry, appreciate your time tonight. Um, I live off of Walker Road, so I was impacted by the withdrawal that, uh, came earlier this evening. And this particular request also impacts where I live, it impacts the same community. Uh, it is a very small space, we already have a lot of congestion. The infrastructure of the roads, water, stormwater, um, schools, all of that is going to be significantly impacted by a community that as of right now will have that negative impact on it. Not saying there's not other opportunity to have development in that particular, uh, space, but what is being asked currently is significant and will have a significant impact. My request to you is really think it through. I, I am opposed to it, uh, because I am impacted especially just by that one intersection off of Ebenezer and One Thirty-Eight. And I just know it's only gonna expand from there. Our schools are impacted, everything is impacted that we do. So I just ask that you seriously consider it and I hope that you will oppose it as well. Thank you.
Uh, the applicant does have time remaining if he chooses to do a rebuttal.
Thank you. Um, Josh Mahoney again for the applicant. Uh, I heard a lot of concerns from the community this evening. I did my best to take, um, good notes. I see there's a trend with some concern about traffic, schools, I heard stormwater, and, um, a, a, what I'll describe as a general, um, opposition to development. Um, in my presentation earlier, I let you know that approval of this application is subject to a traffic study being completed and any recommendations that come out of that being implemented or included in the site plan. Um, I brought that up because that, those changes, those recommendations that come out will go a long way to mitigate the impact that this community will have on traffic. Um, that's really all we can do. We can take into account the, uh, the recommendations and considerations from traffic experts and implement them. Because we only have control of this parcel of land, we don't have control over the roadways throughout Rockdale County. There's nothing that my client can do to go out and, you know, whether it be expanding roadways or road diets or traffic circles or what, what have you. Um, but what we can do is take into account the recommendations that come out of that traffic study and we would be required to do so, uh, should you approve this application. Um, when it comes to schools, you know, that is also not something that's kind of done blindly. The, the school board has a process for projecting the number of students that are coming into the system and planning ahead, uh, even taking into account new developments. And so, um, as we move throughout the development process, the school will be made aware, uh, that we're coming. They will do a projection to determine how many students, uh, this particular development will produce. And then they will make recommendations for, um, how, how many resources or what, whether they need trailers or new, new, um, space, things like that. These are the, these are the types of things that are not just done blindly, they're taken into consideration and planned for. I heard a concern about stormwater, again, this is something that we must take into consideration as we do, uh, as we move through the development process. Um, we are not legally not allowed to negatively impact folks who are downstream. And that's, look, you look at, you know, how the water flows across the property. Um, we have to account for that, we can't bring a development and then start flooding out the neighbors. So we are implementing stormwater management on this property where currently there are, there, there's no stormwater management. So water that flows freely today will be captured and rerouted. Um, what this comes down to is really the stormwater should improve. It cannot get worse, we're not allowed to do that, legally, we're not allowed to do that. And this county has oversight over that process to make sure it doesn't happen. Uh, I heard, I heard a concern about clear cutting in my last twenty seconds. Um, I mentioned in my presentation, this development will have more than fifty-seven thousand square feet of green space. We're not looking to just knock down trees, put up buildings and leave. We're looking to, um, bring a greens, green space, green infrastructure to this development for folks to enjoy as well as install a buffer around the properties so that, um, there's a green buffer between our property and the surrounding properties. Uh, but that's my time, so thank you.
Can I ask one more question? Has your client considered doing something that is more ecologically friendly, such as some of the, um, renderings that Mr. Kelicik presented?
So unfortunately, I wasn't able to see them from where I was sitting, but I am familiar with the cottages on Vaughn. The cottages on Vaughn, um, being a, a tiny home community.
Well, not that one, it was another.
It's the, um, conservation community.
Right. It's a, I think a novel idea where it's, you keep the density.
Hmm, yeah.
But you also keep the, you, um, plan for, um, m- more green space with the same amount of density.
Sure, yeah, I'm familiar with this concept, other jurisdictions have it, I know Henry County has it where you can figure out the number of units that you're permitted, given the land use, and then shrink the lot size down, um, to preserve green space. Uh, I'm not familiar, does, um, Rockdale County have a conservation subdivision option? Yes, okay. And is it for a single-family detached only? Make sure, okay. All right, um, well, it's, and I'm gonna check one more thing, is it meant for, um, any, an old, any old parcel or is it meant for like ecologically, um, ecologically sensitive areas? Okay. Um, my understanding of that is like, um, one example comes to mind, in Henry County, there was a parcel, a large parcel that had wetlands all over it, floodplain all over it, uh, but there was a small pocket of, um, land that wasn't affected by that. Perfect opportunity for a conservation subdivision to protect the ecologically sensitive, um, areas. You just take that density, the, the number of units you're permitted, and then shrink it down into the usable space to preserve everything else. That's just not the case here, this, this parcel is devoid of any ecologically sensitive areas.
I understand, maybe we should talk, maybe we can talk through planning.
Yeah, sure.
About, uh, some more ideas.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Did you have anything?
I don't, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that is all for this application, unless you have any questions of staff?
No.
Okay. Then we will proceed to the next, uh, application.
Unfortunately, no, no mail, no. Uh, next case, uh, on the agenda is part of the old, uh, agenda, I mean, old items, is zoning case, uh, twenty-three dash, uh, one-five and future land use case twenty-three, uh, dash four. Uh, the applicant is Mr. John Andrew Nix, uh, the subject property is forty-two fifty Southeast Highway Twenty. Uh, the applicant has two requests before you this evening. The first request again is to amend the future land use map, uh, from medium density, uh, to commercial. And the second request is to, uh, rezone this twelve point eight eight acres uh, from agricultural residential, uh, to C two, general commercial, uh, for the development of a twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty square foot retail center. Uh, the subject property has two frontages, uh, one frontage is along Highway Twenty, the other frontage is along Christian Circle. Uh, the approximate frontage along Highway Twenty is eight hundred and fifty feet. Uh, the frontage along Christian Circle is seven hundred and ten feet. Uh, the subject property is one point five miles, uh, south of the intersection between Highway Twenty and Honey Creek Road. Uh, the proposed development will have two points of, uh, have two points of entry, uh, uh, two points of access along Highway Twenty and one point of access, uh, along Christian Circle. There is a fifty-foot transitional buffer located to the rear of the property as well as a twenty-five-foot buffer, uh, located north of the property. Uh, this site, uh, does not have a sewer, uh, so the applicant is proposing, uh, three primary septic fields and three secondary, uh, uh, septic fields. Uh, the site does have water, so I just wanted to point that out. Uh, for the proposed development, uh, the applicant is proposing, oh, I apologize, I forgot to mention, uh, the detention pond. Uh, because of the nature of the overall development, uh, the detention pond, uh, is to, is going to be a twenty-four thousand six hundred and sixteen square feet uh, to account for all the impervious surface on the site. Uh, the applicant is proposing, uh, several, uh, retail spaces, uh, total of eighteen, uh, eight retail spaces. Uh, each unit size would be fifteen hundred square feet. Uh, there is a proposed, uh, restaurant location, uh, equally a total of five thousand and fifty square feet. Uh, located to the southern portion of the property, uh, there is another, uh, unidentified commercial building, uh, for a total of twelve thousand, uh, square feet. Uh, the planning commission did recommend denial of this application. Uh, the reasoning to be, uh, that this, uh, proposed, uh, development is not compatible with the surrounding area, uh, again, as well as indicating a concern regarding traffic. Um, the applicant is here to present. I, as always, I ask you, please hold your questions until after the applicant present because your question may have been answered at that time.
Uh, John Nix, nine four five Bank Street, uh, Conyers, Georgia. And, uh, Mark Walton is also gonna present on this. Um, could we have the slide up that shows the canopy around the site that we submitted? I know we're on a time schedule, so while they're getting that up, I'll just briefly describe the property. Um, as you can see from the rendering, there are, um, there's a building to the north, uh, which is, the applicant is seeking a sit-down restaurant, there's several franchises that are looking at it that are the, the diner variety, uh, but they'd be sit-down, it wouldn't be fast food. And then you have two other sections that allow for commercial or retail activity, which are the smaller units in the middle of the site and then to the south of our south. It's a space, um, that can be used for multiple things and also subdivided into the smaller units depending on the demand. Um, the interesting thing about this site is that it has been, um, held by only two people prior to the applicant's purchase of it in, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, I traced it back to nineteen forty-six when a family acquired it, I'm sure it was a farm at that time. That family held it until nineteen ninety. Uh, I know who bought it in nineteen ninety, they bought it as an investment. Uh, they ended up holding it until twenty twenty-two, unable to realize that investment. Um, there just weren't any parties interested and I don't know if there are any attempts to rezone it during that thirty-two-year period. So the benefit of that is that the community has had this great stand and if we ever get the photograph, uh, of trees that have been undisturbed. Um, but that, for that very reason, this lends itself to a site that you can have a use like this. Yeah, if you get, go a little further, the, the one with the tree canopy will show up. You have a twelve-acre site, but the, the requi, the providing, that's good enough right there. The site is literally surrounded to the rear by a canopy of trees before you get to the residential that buffers it to the rear. So in addition to the 50 feet that we're required to have when we press against R1, the backside of that has that additional tree zone in it simply because the developer isn't intending to use it. To this side of the property, as we go north on 20, you see the residential and it's buffered by the 50 feet of undisturbed buffer. And to the extent that it can be accomplished on-site, none of those areas will be impacted except to the rear of the building that busts the property coming north because that area will have to be cleared for the retention facility. You see across the street, 191 acres from I-20, from Georgia 20, that's in a family trust. I don't know what that family intends to do, but it's been in trust and it's been that way since as long as the property across the street. I'd like Mark to just describe a little bit about the site as far as the layout, unless I've covered it all when I just said. Do you have anything to add? I didn't mean to walk on your side.
No, I mean, you've, you've covered it quite well. There's a, a good mixture of landscape zones in there as required by code. They'll each have trees, so it will be a shaded parking area. It won't just be an ocean of parking like some of the older developments. And as John mentioned, it's really going to be nestled in with a lot of tree save areas around it. So other than just exposure along the highway, it's going to be pretty much in harmony with the property.
One of the concerns that we heard at the planning commission was traffic. One of the conditions of the zoning, if we were to receive the zoning, is to get a traffic study. We went ahead and got a traffic study. We've shared it with staff. The, the traffic study gave us a strong indication about the concerns for Christian Circle. And we're dealing with the traffic engineer right now to come up with some solutions for that. I met several people at the planning commission meeting. But unfortunately, because of the holidays and the traffic study and other things that were going on, we were unable to communicate further, which I told them I would do. We have the incredible opportunity because y'all don't meet for 30 days before you vote on this and have already met with one of the property owners. And we fully intend to have a session with them, with the traffic engineer, to address this, the traffic issue. And we've got some ideas that we think can help that. We're not going to solve it, but I think we can help it. This is an unusual situation as far as a commercial development, simply because, again, the land size and how it can sit. The developer has done other projects like this in the Atlanta area. They're well experienced and I think they can produce a, a good product that's above what we're typically seeing down these corridors as far as commercial use. And we'll reserve the rest of our time.
We do have people who sign up. We do have, we did not have anybody sign up in favor, but we have three individuals who are signing up in opposition.
Thank you.
The first person is Ms. Judy Elston.
Hello, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Judy Elston. And I am part of the community, but that will be behind the proposed development. Thank you. Short as they are, just didn't grow much. But I am one of the people that live behind that development. And I'm, I'm part of a, a big neighborhood of older people. We have some young, but the majority of us are older. So when we try to get to Highway 20, then do it. You have to, it all depends on the time of day. You have to go back to the left and go all the way around just to get to Kroger. Because we can't pull out there. Nerves, yes. Traffic, yes. Okay, but if we want to make the road wider, that's not going to help. Because there's a cemetery, a small one that sits right there across from the proposed building. And there's four to five houses that's going to lose a vast amount of their yard just to make the street wider. So if, if we wanted to live in Buckhead or Decatur, we would have moved up there. But we didn't because Rockdale was my vision 20-something years ago. Didn't do it. We moved to DeKalb. But 20 years ago, it was idyllic. So when we retired, we said, let's move to Rockdale. So we came out here four years ago. And now we've been hit by DeKalb County and Buckhead coming to Rockdale. That's not good. That's not good. So we want growth, but we want growth dignified. You know, we want growth to be where we can have the schools and don't have to have a trailer. Because nobody wants their children in a trailer. We did that in DeKalb County. We don't want that here. We want the taxes to be low enough to where we can function and still eat, still eat. We don't need a restaurant right outside of our door. Because if I heard that they did not, this is out of character for the community, that's true. It is out of character. Because my neighbor, 85 years old, doesn't want to go to a restaurant. She wants to sit in her kitchen and look out her garage at us like she does every day. We don't need that. I'm asking that you show us some mercy. Show us some grace. Because we, we've had that life that these young people want. Let them move to Buckhead. We don't want to go anywhere. Leave us here so we can rest. Walk when we want to, not have to run by five or six cars because this leg won't let me make but a half a car, and then I'm on the ground. So let's not do that, okay? We're asking you to show us some grace and mercy, okay? That's what I'm asking. And I'm asking for my, I was disabled grandson. I would like to go out and continue to push him in his chair. But if we have to fight three or four cars, we can't do that. We don't even know what kind of restaurant. We know it's a sit-down, but we don't know what it is. My guess is it's going to be a hot wings place. Or, or Chinese food. I love Chinese food, but I don't need to walk right there to get it. I think we're okay where we are. So we're asking, please show us some grace and mercy, okay? And deny this. That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ms. Kelly Manning.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Manning. I live on Christian Circle. My property adjoins the property that's up for rezoning. I've lived in this community for 35 years. I'm a homeowner, a taxpayer, a community volunteer, an employer and a voter in Rockdale County. My husband, well, sorry. These are some of the concerns that David and I have, my husband and I have about this property. First, the first question that I have, and I don't, I guess I'm not allowed to ask a question, but I thought code, Rockdale County Section 238-4 said that there was supposed to be a sign posted before the hearing. And there has not been a sign posted before today's hearing. So number one, do our neighbors know about it? Is that, is that even legitimate that there wasn't a sign posted tonight, before tonight, 15 days prior to tonight? Secondly, my husband was told at the hearing on October that Mr. Nix was, that the reason for the postponement was to allow time with, for him to meet with the adjacent property owners. And there has been no meeting as such. He's left contact information. We've never been contacted. We are obviously hesitant about what they're going to put in there. Does Rockdale County, does our community need another vacant building? Do we need another liquor store? Do we need another vape shop? Do we need another empty building sitting on our property, especially in my backyard? This is literally in my backyard. If, if, and I, and I get, look, I get he owns his property and he wants to do something with it and he doesn't want it to sit there. I get it. But if he was putting something like a professional building or something like that rather than these, these buildings that will sit vacant or, or worse, put something in there that's going to be a hazard to our community. The traffic, y'all, the traffic. My mailbox has been taken out four times by the traffic on Christian Circle already. Like, like one of my colleagues here said, it is impossible to turn off our road at certain hours of the day. You can't even chance it to go left on our road. Right's already a hazard. Left, you can hang it up. You just don't go to Kroger anymore. The light pollution, you know, again, I'm right next to it. We have deer in our backyard. We have, you know, we have, we, we hear crickets. We, you know, it's, it's such a nice quality of life right now. And you put lights and, and all that light pollution. We're, we're not excited about that by any, and the noise. And then my property value, my property value, and then my neighbor's property value. How am I going to sell my house? Not that I want to, but you know, that's, that's, you know, that's some of the things. So I wanted to say that my husband and I decided to stay in this community, even though many of our friends and family decided to bail. We want this community to win. We want it to be a place that people want to live and raise their families. And for this reason, and the reasons that I suggested, we respectfully ask you to deny this request. Thank you.
Last person to sign up is Ms. Keisha Anderson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Keisha Anderson. My property is behind the Mannings.
I'm sorry, behind her?
Behind the Mannings, the one that was sitting, speaking before me. And unlike them, what purpose will this commercial property bring to our neighborhood? What value will it add to our neighborhood? Nothing. Because we have commercial property up on Honey Creek that's been empty and is up for rent. They can't even keep anybody in it. Just built a chevron that has empty spots in it. So what value will this add to us? Nothing. We need the green space. We have the animals in my backyard that we appreciate. We appreciate those things, the greenery, everything. And adding this to us? No. I came to Rockdale for the peace and quiet for the greenery. I came from DeKalb because of the commercial properties everywhere. And to add this? No. It doesn't add anything to us. It takes away from us. And the value of what you've taken away from our community is too much to be adding additional commercial with the traffic that we already have with pollution, everything else. We don't need this at all. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the last speaker. The applicant does have time for rebuttal if he chooses.
Thank you. Did you have any questions? I, I had a couple of questions. I was wondering if your client would be interested in doing something that we would conserve more of the greenery, maybe bringing it, the, maybe not having the buildings as spread out. Maybe doing something where the restaurants on the bottom and something more like a mixed use, something more innovative than what we see here that could alleviate some of the concerns of the residents leaving them more green space, doing something that would enhance the corridor. I'm interested in the, the restaurant. I know the community is saying that they don't need it, but everybody else in Rockdale County has indicated that they want sit-down restaurants. I'm not interested in a wing shop or anything like that. But I do want more places that we can go to eat. So I would be interested in seeing what kind of restaurant is there. But I would also be interested in trying to minimize the amount of asphalt and things like that in that development. So that's just something that I would like for you all to maybe address and take into consideration.
We, we certainly can do all of those things. She is absolutely correct. I spoke with her husband at the meeting in October and said we would have a meeting. And we did not. And that's not on them, it's on me. We, we fully intend in the next 30 days to touch base. I'm going to give my card and my phone number to, my cellphone number to the two people, in addition to the Mannings that spoke tonight. At least we can have a dialogue. A lot of things that have been said about the development are the balance between what I want and my land and what my expectation is for a property owner with his or her land. And unfortunately, a lot of times those two don't balance. I, I know we have a pretty steep hill when we are trying to develop a site that has sat like it sat for the last 50 or more years. Gosh, it's almost 70 years it's been in that condition. So it's a hard thing to give up. But the reason that the site has been set the way it is with that big back buffer without developing it, with doing more planning, you can't see it in that site planned very well, but the green space and the parking lot is way more than, not way more, but it's more than what's expected. We are prepared to deal with traffic. We, we do think, and I'm a history major, not an engineer, but we do think that create, taking some of the property and creating a queue line that would be able to turn left and have, still have the straight line of Christian Circle that could take, go right, would alleviate some of the issues. It's not going to take away at all, but it would make a difference. We're also asking our traffic engineer to push to see whether or not, but we don't think it's possible. We don't think a warrant study will warrant a traffic light on, on that highway at Christian Circle. So that queue lane is about the best that could be accomplished. The client is open-minded. We are trying to do a product that is better than a lot of what we see up and down the corridor in Rockdale County. A more attractive product. But we can't solve all the issues and, but we certainly will try to address what we've heard today. And we, I, we always try to be, at least I always try to be respectful. Most of the time I get up here, I'm not the most popular person in the world. But we will make a, an effort to address the issues that have been presented. And Commissioner Washington, your comments.
Thank you. I also would be very interested in making sure that whatever you do, there's still access for the, I'm sorry, what was your name, ma'am? Ms. Judy's son, was it son that you?
Grandson.
Her grandson, to make sure that he still has a, a good quality of life with her being able to try, help transport him. That would be very important to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is, it's for this application unless you have questions for staff. Then we'll proceed to the last and final item. It will be a new item. Give a minute for people to transition out. Yes, ma'am, sorry about that. The last item on the agenda is, new item on the agenda is RZ case 23-01. This item has been before you previously, the applicant. Uh, the applicant, uh, at the last here, October hearing, uh, requested to go back in front of the planning commission for reconsideration. Uh, they made some minor, uh, minor modifications to their application. Uh, the site address is Zero Salem Road. Uh, the applicant is Bloom &amp; Campbell LLC on behalf of Mr. David Babatow. Uh, before you, you have one, uh, one request for you this evening, uh, is to rezone the subject property, uh, from SRC dash NC Salem Ro, Salem Road Corridor Neighborhood Commercial to SRC MXD Salem Road Corridor Mixed Use Development District, uh, for a mixed use Next slide for me, please. Uh, the subject property, uh, has fronted, uh, has fronted along two, uh, points of entry. Uh, fronted along Salem Road and fronted along Southeast Avondale Boulevard. Uh, the frontage along Salem Road is approximately 403 feet. Uh, and the frontage along, uh, South, uh, Al, Avondale Southeast is approximately 300, 327 feet. Uh, there is a 70-foot buffer located to the rear of the property. Uh, that is part of the Avondale Springs subdivision. Uh, it's actually a part of, uh, it's a separate track, but it's still part of the actual subdivision. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the proposed, uh, development, uh, is a mixture of three buildings. Uh, the first two buildings are going to be a, a mixture of office residential on the first floor, uh, they were loft-style apartments, uh, on the second floor. Uh, there will be approximately four, uh, units on the second floor. Uh, there will be, uh, 16, uh, covered parking spaces to accommodate for residents. Uh, the third building, uh, is going to be a, a combination of a convenience store with fuel pumps, uh, and a fast food restaurant. Uh, the total, uh, square footage for that, again, is 6,000, uh, and the other two, uh, buildings will be total of 6,000, uh, 6,000 square feet as well. Uh, there are two points of access onto this site. Uh, the point, uh, the point of entry of full access is against Avondale Boulevard, and there's a right in and a right out only on Salem Road. Uh, there will be, uh, sidewalk, uh, along, uh, the public access road along with a 20-foot landscape strip, uh, according, uh, required by code. Uh, for the additional customer parking lot, there will be a total of 55 customers, uh, customer parking spaces, uh, for residents who are coming onto the site for the office retail or for the convenience, um, gas station. Uh, the planning commission did recommend denial of this application. Uh, I'm sorry, they did not recommend denial, that was previously. They recommend approval of this application with, uh, two additional conditions. Uh, the two additional conditions are to make sure that, uh, the development is ADA compliance, uh, that, and that all businesses, uh, close at 10:00 PM, uh, Sunday, uh, through Thursday and Friday, Saturday, close at 11:00 PM. Uh, the applicant, uh, is here, uh, to present. Uh, as always, I do ask you hold your questions until the applicant has presented, uh, because your questions may have been answered at that time.
Good evening, Commissioner Washington, Dr. Williams. I'm Jody Campbell with the law firm of Bloom &amp; Campbell, 3,000 Langford Road, Peachtree Corners, Georgia, Building 100, uh, 30071. Uh, but before I begin, I want to apologize. Um, this screen has frozen, so the only thing that's working is this one. So if I'm looking over here and I'm not looking at you, I'm not trying to ignore.
We completely understand.
Um, if you, if you don't mind stopping my time until the PowerPoint's up. My PowerPoint.
We'll, we'll get, we'll brush you.
Thank you very much. So I represent the Salem Family Trust, and as the, the staff indicated, this property is located, it's on Salem Road, it's 3.31 acres, located at the intersection of Salem Road and Avondale Boulevard, which is where the Avondale Springs, uh, development is located. Uh, the purpose of the project is to try to, uh, develop the property in a way that is in conformance with future land use map, uh, that the board commissioners has stated as the intention and the desired direction, which is a mixed-use product. Um, our original application, I will admit, focused mostly on the commercial part of that mixed use. And so the major revision that you're gonna see in the site plan that is different from last time is we have added the residential component that I think addresses in an intelligent way a lot of the issues that are facing Rockdale County as it relates to affordable workforce housing. So, next slide, please. Again, the, uh, existing site is 3.31 acres. It's approximately 1,200 feet north of the intersection of Salem Road and Fairview Road and McCullough Road. It's presently zoned SRC NC, and a future land use map designates this as mixed use, which is what we seek to rezone to. Next slide, please. This is the site plan of the development that we propose, uh, to develop. It has three 6,000 square foot buildings. I'm gonna start with the C store, 'cause that is what we can, that is what is gonna drive the ability to develop the rest of the parcel. Um, it is a convenience store, fast food combination. Um, it's, we don't want something super intensive, uh, and we've done some things to mitigate the impact of such a development on the surrounding residential properties. But that's, that was the partner that we have that's kind of helping to drive the funding and the development of the rest of the parcel, to bring it into the mixed-use designation that we have talked about. We have partnered with Clippers Gas Station, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but this is the, their development specializes in the gas station, higher-end, higher facade, higher quality. Think more like the brand-new racetracks, um, uh, that have, you know, very beautiful architectural finishes, but they also partner with fast food restaurants as an additional funding mechanism to help drive the development of the, uh, uh, the parcel. And I'll show you some illustrative examples from around the metro Atlanta area adjacent to residential areas. And we're not talking about Buckhead, I'm talking about, you know, in the, in the suburbs, in the Vinings area out in Cobb County. Uh, the second, uh, a couple of features I'd like to highlight. Um, it is a right-in, right-out only on Salem Road. It, it is, uh, you can make a left out of Avondale Boulevard, as with most developments, we'd be required to complete a traffic study and incorporate any of those requirements into, uh, our development plans. That would be something that would be done at permitting. Uh, all traffic flow relative to the drive-through window would be funneled in a one-way direction in between these parcels, so it would not create a long backlog out on Salem Road or even on Avondale Boulevard. To the rear of the property, um, I wanna highlight that obviously there will be a 20-foot and vegetative screen and non-disturbed buffer on our property, but also right next to it is a grand total of 70 feet that the Avondale Springs subdivision already has. There's a, a multi-use trail and then a 50-foot non-disturbed area. So there's already an existing 70-foot buffer, and we're of course gonna add the additional 20 feet and add plantings that are required by the conditions. Uh, there's also, as you see in the middle, right there next to the, uh, the fuel pump island, we have put up a vegetative island of plantings, larger trees. The purpose of that is to mitigate the impact of the actual pumps on the residences within the development. That was a comment that was made originally at planning commission, and we incorporated that into our site plan. The other two buildings are 6,000 square feet in space and are two-story. On the downstairs, we're looking at commercial, and we're not talking about vape shops, we're talking about professional-type developments. Think accounting offices, think orthodontist and dental offices, think testing centers like Kaplan or Cooman. Uh, and then up above it would be, in each of those two buildings, a grand total of four loft-style apartments, approximately 15,000, 1,500, that'd be really big loft, uh, 1,500 square feet in space. Again, this is not your family housing. So there would be no burden on school system. This is workforce housing. And I know one of the questions the planning commission had was, what are we talking about? Price points? Well, the beauty, I, I, one of my pet peeves as a zoning lawyer, both as somebody who's often opposed to zonings and on favor, I'm not the type of person that's gonna sit here and tell you what price point we're looking at. We're trying to create a self-contained economic unit here, and so the market truly drives what that is. And a lot of that is driven by the types of businesses that come in down below. Obviously, an accountant can afford a higher rent if there are homes upstairs than, say, a testing center or a tutor or something like that. So we wanna be flexible, and I certainly don't wanna make promises that can't be kept. I know that was a question that came up. Uh, for the residents, we will have designated covered parking. You see that cross-stashed on the proposed site plan. Next slide, please. We included in our site plan in our application a couple of examples of other similar developments. Obviously, this is something that's unique. I mean, this is not something that there's a lot of, if at all, in Rockdale County. So we've tried to go in the neighboring vicinity to try to find a couple of examples, and the two that we found are, are in the Covington area, and we included some, some picture inserts in the site plan, but we al, also want to, uh, drill down on those. Next slide, please. The first example is at 133 Church Street in Covington. It has exterior parking, it has 1,400 square feet, or 1,500 square feet loft-style apartments up top. And then down below, you have your neighborhood commercial, you have a Scoops Ice Cream, there's a dental office here. Um, this is the type of development that we are envisioning here, and I think this is exactly what your future land use plan envisioned, too. And granted, it's on a smaller scale, but unfortunately, as y'all know, you gotta start somewhere. And that, we're hoping that this becomes a good model. It's not a super intense model, but it's something that can be a guidepost for the rest of the Salem corridor, which I think is what the commission wants. Next slide, please. Uh, and this, I include this slide, this is at the same property. You see this covered parking over here for the residents? This is the, this is just illustrative, just so you can see the type of thing that's done to set off residential parking and make sure that, the, the beauty of ours is it's directly adjacent to the building, so there's direct covered access. Next slide, please. Those, uh, the, just those areas circled. Next slide, thank you. The second similar example is 4175 Raphael Street in Covington. Again, exterior parking with an entrance around the rear. This has a small coffee shop down, uh, below, and I believe this one is the one that has an accounting office kind of right next door. These have 1,250 square foot loft-style apartments. It, we also polled several other developers that are kind of trying to do the loft-style developments in this vicinity, and the feedback we got from them is incredibly high demand. We didn't query whether it was, you know, what the rental values were, but they indicated to us that there's a tremendous amount of demand and that they have had no problem with occupancy. So I think there's a tremendous need right now for this type of affordable housing that doesn't impact schools or transportation infrastructure. Eight, loft-style apartments is not gonna create a massive burden on infrastructure like larger multifamily products will. Um, next slide, please. So this is the example of the Clippers and, uh, convenience store slash restaurant. This is a Clippers with a Bojangles restaurant. This property is located over in Vinings. I highlighted this one because this is directly adjacent to a residential development directly behind this building. It's laid out almost exactly. Now, it doesn't have the mixed-use component as part of the parcel, but this is what we're talking about. Next slide, please. As you can see, this is on Oak Drive, and literally right down that road, about two power poles to the left is a very, very large, um, now, this is a townhome community that's directly behind it, but those townhomes over there are going for the 400,000s. I highlight that only to suggest and to submit to you that this type of development does not have any kind of negative impact whatsoever on property values in the vicinity. I mean, if you, if there were true concerns about this, then you would see a, a market tick down, and we have not seen that over in that area. Uh, next slide, please. I include this only as another example of what Clippers has done. This is Barito Loco, this is also a chain that is not really common in the Atlanta area, it's actually more common out West. I, I don't like to use this one as illustrative, 'cause this is a perimeter mall, uh, literally directly across the street, and it's got, you know, 16-story office buildings behind it. So I don't think that this is a, a good building. I only include this to show you an example of kind of architectural details and what have you. Um, as I stated, uh, in, uh, or as was stated by staff, the planning commission and the staff both recommended approval. Uh, the staff recommended with 13 conditions, we are agreeable to all of those, and then the additional one that was added was the ADA compliance. Of course, that's a requirement of whatever we build, and we'll make sure that we comply with those. In terms of, um, the hours of operation, that was a new condition added by staff. Again, we have no objection whatsoever, and we think it's actually very appropriate, given, again, this is kind of the first, uh, in what we hope will be the transformation of, and to what we thought the Salem corridor should ultimately be. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Nailed it.
I thought you needed...
I apologize, he, he nailed it at 10 minutes, so. Uh, but yes, ma'am, we do have one person to sign up and speak in opposition, uh, that's
Good evening, commissioners. Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams. It's nice to see Director Newt Joko here tonight also. I, I spoke at the planning commission about this. I live in the Fieldstone subdivision off Salem Road next to the Avondale Springs subdivision on Salem Road. The sign is up on Salem Road. You, you can't really slow down and read it on Salem Road, or you'll get rear-ended, which I did last Saturday. Not trying to read the sign, however. That, this is a, to me, this is an example, and I don't understand why the Avondale Springs people aren't here. They're ignoring the sign, they don't know what the sign means, they think, oh, it won't happen, because our leadership won't let something like that come into our neighborhood. This is a perfect example of NIMBY, not my backyard. So where are the people? I don't know. So I am here because there aren't enough filling stations on Salem Road. The New Shell at Fairview and Salem Road said it was gonna have a fast food next to it. Well, it's a market, which has the same sort of stuff as in the filling station. Vape, alcohol, toilet paper maybe, milk, I don't know. There is no food there. The QuickTrip is close to it. It also has food. The Ingalls is a pretty much close across the street to it. It's got the grocery stores, it has a fuels, it has filling station. A couple of other things, I get the whole 10 minutes. Yay. Okay. Um, a couple of things I wanted to point out on Mr. Campbell's examples. 1133 Church Street, those are not loft apartments, those are condominiums that have been sold. Apartment number two, which was a two-bedroom, two-bath, 1,200 square feet, sold last year for $277,000. Unit number 12, again, two bedrooms, two baths, 1,738 square feet, sold last, this month, $360,000. They have assigned carports. There is an HOA fee, annual HOA fee for those in Covington, $2,230. Unit number one, which is a two-bedroom, two-bath townhome, 1,611 square feet, sold in 2021. Okay, that 4175 Raphael Street, that's in Covington's Clark's Grove, which is a special area. It's got a little bit of everything in it. It's, it, this is a mixed-use building. The residents are on the second and third floor. A two-bedroom, three-bath, the rent is $2,039. They, there's on-street parking or an attached one-car garage for an extra $100 a month. It, for those units, there's an $1,800 deposit, $1,500 security deposit, and a $300 move-in fee. Just to let you move in, you have to pay $300. The minimum suggested income for that apartment is $64,800. These are definitely not workforce housing units. You would have to make $31.15 an hour to have an annual income of $64,800. I checked Salem Chase Apartments, which would be on, which are on the other side of Avondale Springs. They're one-bedroom, one-bath, 844 square feet, is $1,175. At $15 an hour, which, is that workforce wages? I don't know. You would have to work 78 hours of your whole month to be able, just to pay for rent. That would be almost 50% of your income, not 30%, which rent should be to have enough for everything else. Salem Road is gonna be widened. They will have to apply for one more curb cut on Salem Road. They will have to apply for one more curb cut on Salem Road to get their second entrance to the office buildings. I haven't heard whether, who's going to own those office buildings. Are they going to sell them? Sell them to who? And will who they sell them to actually go along with having lofts on the upper floor? A couple of months ago, or last year, at Flatshoals and Edwards Drive, there was another rezoning for a mixed use for a gas station with convenience store and two office buildings. Now, that one was approved and it didn't require residential part, parcel, component. So I'm not sure why they felt they had to throw in a residential component in this one, just to get it approved. It's zone neighborhood commercial now. So the office buildings would be no problem for accountants or surveyors or tax prep people or something like that. You don't need the filling station with convenience store for the way it's zoned now. The New Shell, again, the New Shell Station on Fairview and Salem Road has already had a large sheriff's activity at it. Oh, the apartment building, the existing apartment complex on Salem Road is now gated. It didn't used to be gated. I wonder why. Is there crime on Salem Road that requires an apartment complex to have a gate now that didn't used to? I think the ADA compliance thing came from the planning commissions, some of the planning commission comments. For those loft apartments, how would they get to the second floor? Would there be an elevator? Would there be steps? How could a handicapped person get up steps to get to a second-floor loft? Would they, would, and again, would they allow pets? Again, we don't know because we don't know who is going to be the ultimate owner of those office buildings. Is it going to be Clipper Gas Station? Mr. Campbell hasn't said who's going to be the owner of those buildings. Okay, I have, obviously, I'm opposed to it, even though it's not in my backyard. It is very close and I would have to go by it every day. I can't imagine. And if anybody from Avondale Springs is listening, it's not a done deal yet. The board of commissioners will have the second reading and decision on it in February. You can do an email campaign to them to let them know that you oppose this project in your backyard, even if you weren't able to attend any of these meetings in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a rebuttal? I have some questions.
I don't have time. Really, it's perfect for me to give a rebuttal, but I'm happy to answer your questions.
Sure. I actually agree with Ms. Geller on the, I like the mixed use part. It's the gas station/convenience store that I have. I personally believe that Salem Road has enough gas stations. I actually believe Rockdale County has enough gas stations, but that is what's giving me angst. I like the mixed use. I like the affordable workforce housing. I love the, the, all of that. It's the gas station, convenience store, and especially the type of convenience, convenience store and restaurant that usually goes along with that. And I'm not just talking about today because if you put it there for five years, it's going to be nice. It's year 10 that I'm most concerned about. So is there anything else that we can do besides a gas station?
So I'll answer that question. Obviously, my client is a developer. He is, he knows the market. He understands the partners that have to be brought on board in order to make a project like this happen. I think that there are a couple of answers to your question and thoughts I have. The first being, as you know, if this is supposed to be a mixed use corridor, there aren't any real mixed uses along Salem Road. And unfortunately, it's one of those tough, you got to start somewhere. The good news though is those types of developments are force multipliers. And so while it's hard to start and you need to maybe bring in less-than-ideal user to start the first one, by doing that, it makes the second one easier and the third one easier and the fourth one easier. So, and again, I believe that while I certainly understand your concerns and I don't disagree, there's a lot of filling stations along Salem Road. I'd be foolish to argue otherwise. It's not like they're slapping a Citgo gas station or a Shell gas station where they're a dime a dozen. These Clipper gas stations are much higher product. That's why they're rarer. They are very selective and they're very, they take a lot to develop, okay?
Excuse me.
Thank you. And so I would just simply encourage you to do your own research and I'm happy to provide additional examples of this type of development because they're not, they're not uncommon nationwide. They're uncommon in the metro area. They retain their character, their upkeep, because that Clipper name means something. And again, if we don't hold to our word, come, bring code enforcement, make us keep to our word. We want to be good neighbors. We understand that we're unique coming in, being the first one and right adjacent to a residential neighborhood. We, I give you, you know, we desire to be good neighbors. We want to make this work. That's the best answer I can provide you for your concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I meant to ask you first, but you know it's late. Did you have any questions?
If you don't have any questions from staff, that is all for all the items on the agenda. The only item we do have for report is I'd like to take a moment to introduce our new planning manager, Ms. Denise Tugman. She comes all the way from Newton County to join us.
All the way. Welcome. All right, well, if our hearts and minds are, I don't know if they're clear, but at least we moved through the agenda. We will stand in turn. Thank you.